Good evening, folks. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Let the record show, this is a special city council meeting for June twenty first, two thousand and twenty-two. All members are now present, and the press has been duly notified. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance, and followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone to this meeting this evening. Appreciate you being in attendance. As you all are aware, this is an educational session for us to ask questions and to get a response from DNR concerning the deer population in Tegu K. Tonight, this is not a public comment forum, so we will not be accepting any public comments. Going to ask for everyone to please just absorb the information. Council will ask questions, and if we have any problems, folks, we're going to have to remove you. So let's not let that happen. Let's all be the Teguans that we know we all are, and talk through this and get educated. So I appreciate everybody's cooperation on the forefront. I'd like to introduce Dr. Ruth for DNR. Sir, you have the floor. Thank you for coming, and I appreciate your time.
You're welcome. You got me on the sound? Good? Okay, thank you. Again, my name is Charles Ruth. I'm a wildlife biologist with Department of Natural Resources. I supervise the Big Game Program, which includes whitetail deer, wild turkey, and black bear. I am a deer biologist. That's what I am professionally. I've picked up the other species as part of my career. I've been with DNR not quite thirty years, been involved in deer research and management for about thirty-five years. These urban or suburban deer issues are very difficult for us to deal with, and I know y'all are struggling with the situation and have been for a number of years. I know I opened my file on Tegu K. in two thousand and twelve, and there's been kind of fits and spurts along the way of activity and so forth. Let's keep this informal. If you have questions, as I move through, just stop me, and we'll deal with them. Let me give you a little background on where we are and how we got where we are with our urban or suburban deer management program, okay? And this was something that I've, dealing with this aspect of deer management, for me, years ago, was something that I had no idea I would ever be involved in, okay? Typically, deer management and research involves researching the field. It involves managing population through hunting regulations, as I expect you understand. Our situation evolved in the mid-nineties, and it, at the time, and really still today, is primarily a coastal situation with these suburban deer, primarily in the Hilton Head Bluffton area. And our really first test case was at Seapines, which I'm sure most of y'all are familiar with. It's the high-end resort at the south end of Hilton Head. That's where they had the PGA tournament. And they started having issues with deer in the mid-nineties. Of course, at Seapines, they spared no expense. They hired a professor, a very well-known wildlife professor from the University of Georgia. Of course, I was supervising our deer program at the time with the department. And they commenced to do several years of high-intensity research on their deer problem. And that research was not only related to deer, but it was related to the people and what the people thought about the deer situation. They were trying to figure out what to do, okay? And it was controversial from the beginning. Long story short, when Dr. Warren came out with his three-hundred-page report, understand that there were several MS students assigned to this study. They caught deer. They put radios on deer to see how much they were moving. They did a lot of surveys of the residents to get their feelings and opinions on the deer. Bottom line is, when Bob's report came out, he said, "Y'all need to remove some deer." Okay? And that was pretty obvious from the get-go. And that's where, you know, what hit the fan at that point. And our agency, along with the property management group at Seapines, and initially, the University of Georgia, they were later dismissed. We were sued by a group of five animal rights, or a contingency of animal rights groups. A couple of them international, a couple of them national, and a couple of state and local type. You would know some of the names. And it was nasty. And of course, I hadn't been working for DNR many years when that started, and that just really woke me up as to, hey, this type of situation can get you in trouble. So to spare the gory details, our agency, along with the property management group, and there was a lot of legal wrangling, as you can expect. We were winning the case as it proceeded, but it went all the way to the state Supreme Court, okay? And of course, that's a multiple-year type of situation, and not very fun. But eventually, the Supreme Court upheld the lower court's decisions that, hey, DNR is charged with managing wildlife, and they can certainly cooperate with private property owners to do so. And that was kind of the crux of the issue. They found that the plaintiffs had no standing to begin with, so it was kind of a dagger in the heart at that situation. And there was a lot of other nuanced parts of that legal case. So that really set the stage for what became our current program. And I know I've sent the guidelines out to probably Scott, Tim, over the years and so forth. Our approach is what we call a delegatorial approach. And I'm here tonight to advise, but when I say delegatorial, y'all need to make these decisions, and if it's, if it looks up to snuff, we're going to, you know, consent to what you want to do, all right? But it's your decision, and I know you already know that it's controversial, okay? And I mentioned a couple of times on the phone with Tim and Scott that I would encourage you to dot the i's and cross the t's on getting your public's opinion on this issue. And I don't know what kind of network you have to reach out to your folks. Maybe you've got most everybody's email address. You could do an email survey. Through the life of this program, we've only had twenty-eight communities do it. Last year, we had fifteen. And it's normally about twelve to fifteen a year. In some cases, we will have, and I'll use Daniel Island as an example, and they started, our program started in nineteen ninety-nine, and that's when Daniel Island was just being developed. They had a historic hunting program on Daniel Island, but when they started putting in the infrastructure, that kind of goes away, and that's a very important point. Deer have always been in this habitat. And at some point in time, before Tegu K. was Tegu K., people were hunting and managing these deer. And what you see is, as communities develop, well, the hunters don't want to go there. They want to go to the country to hunt, or either you got local ordinances that prohibit it or precluded at minimum. But at Daniel Island, they saw it coming. They knew their hunting program was going to suffer, so they started a sharpshooting program as the infrastructure was going in. And I really haven't heard from them in, gosh, nearly twenty years. I think they flattened the place with concrete, and it was no longer deer habitat. So really, we've had about twelve or fifteen properties, like Seapines, Hilton Head Plantation, Belfair, you know, the notable ones in that Hilton Head area. It's part of doing business for those communities. It's just like drainage. It's just like land-keeping. It's a line-item budget. And again, what we're talking about in this case is sharpshooting. It's controlled sharpshooting. It is not hunting. It is not hunting by any stretch. These special permits we issue allow deer to be taken in ways that aren't otherwise allowed during recreational hunting. That's all designed to promote human safety. And of course, back when this was first cranking up, everybody was like, you know, "You're going to shoot my house, my kids, my dogs," so on and so forth. That's never happened. Understand that in the northeast, in the upper Midwest, deer ran into people way before we had these issues in South Carolina, because you've got those giant metropolitan areas. So these sharpshooting programs have been going on in many parts of the country for decades. And you just don't have these crazy stories about dogs and kids, and my windows got shot out, or my car just doesn't happen, okay? But again, you know, what you're trying to do is put these deer using bait in a safe fire zone. They're shot at night with lights, oftentimes, most of the time from vehicles. And again, that's all centered around, you know, human safety. Let's get these deer where they need to be, to where we can safely remove. It's not a crew of people out doing it, at least not in South Carolina. Typically, it's one contractor. And there's a very limited number of these folks that do this type of work. Even after now twenty-three years, there's only been maybe five or six different groups or different individuals that contract this type of work. As part of our process, we do require annual deer surveys. We did one for you guys back in two thousand and sixteen, I think. We just recently did one for you. We hope that we can leave that with you to take over. It's not hard. And I know, I think you've posted the results of that survey on your website. You need to do a couple more as part of this decision-making process. It doesn't matter to DNR what y'all do. It's your decision. Typically, this is not a biological issue. In fact, I would say that no place we have dealt with is the biology of the deer compromised. Yeah, they may not weigh quite as much as some other deer, but as far as the deer are concerned, everything is okay, and they're going to make more deer. I know that there was a lot of landscape damage noted when we did the survey, and I wasn't involved. I kind of was involved from afar. But Don Cockman, who's one of our other biologists, that, from a regional standpoint, works this area, and Don's highly experienced. He's done hundreds of spotlight surveys. He called me the next morning, said, he was flabbergasted. He's never really done them in this type of setting. I've done a bunch of them in this type of setting, so I knew what you could expect. You know, we saw a hundred and one deer on a roughly five-mile survey route that kind of split off of the main drag into seven different transects. And, you know, when you do the computations and so forth, you've got a very, very high deer population, about as good as, about as high as I've seen. And I've dealt with some extreme cases. So, but again, it's not a biological issue. This is a social issue. And, you know, from your standpoint, has that risen to the level where you think your public is going to support action? And typically, the issues are human safety, whether it be deer vehicle collisions, the occasional, I got knocked off of my bike by a spook deer, and these things do happen. They happen. Concern over tick-borne diseases, which typically, we don't have a lot of that in South Carolina, but a lot of folks get concerned about it. And there are parts of the country where there is some significant Lyme disease or lichiosis and so on and so forth. Then you got your run-of-the-mill, you know, damage to landscape ornamentals and so forth. Just deer standing around in people's yards all the time. And really, you know, as part of that Seapines case, when we were testifying in court, one of the property owners says, "I'm tired of my grandkids picking up deer poop thinking it's candy." So, you know, you got stuff like that. So, you know, these are very difficult issues. And like I said, I wasn't prepared thirty years ago to deal with it, but I've gotten right good at it. And there's not a lot about this matter that I haven't dealt with, or I haven't heard. And so I'll start with that and let you guys ask all the questions you want.
I got a quick one. Just from the deer perspective, with this extreme population that we have, like a worst-case scenario, you know, you talked about some pedestrians getting hit by spook deer, collisions with cars, eating people's gardens and flowers. With an increasing population over time, what would be a worst-case scenario that we could look forward to?
Yeah, you know, again, we've never run into a situation where the biology got compromised. And I think what happens is, these animals, they're going to lose a little body condition. The survival, their productivity is going to decline. In other words, everything's going to look about the same, but fawn production and survival is going to taper off. This thing has a way of wanting to balance out. Now, it may be an extraordinary high balancing point, but it's not like these deer are going to start falling out. You know, that would be something that we've never seen. And I think a lot of us think that that's what's going to happen, but we've never seen anything like that.
Okay. And on that note, we do have people that enjoy the deer. You know, again, it's a fifty-fifty split in the city with those that love them, those that hate them. For those that do feed the deer on a regular basis, you know, obviously, social media's always, there's the rumor mill, and it must be true if it's on Facebook, obviously. But as far as for those that do decide, we're going to feed the deer regardless of recommendations from the city or from DNR, whatever it may be. You know, there's rumors out there on because of what they're feeding, hooves are, they're looking deformed or funny, or whatever it may be. For those that do refuse to not feed the deer, just to be that devil's advocate, what is, what would be appropriate for those people that say, "Hey, I don't care what you guys are going to say. I'm still putting this in my yard because I enjoy seeing these guys." What's good, what's bad for those that encourage deer frequenting their yard?
Sure. And I completely agree that you do not, you know, do your best to not allow people to do that, because that's just exacerbating the problem. If folks are doing a lot of that, you can actually unnaturally prop these animals up, and you don't need that here, you know. You know, typically, folks are going to feed corn, and given that the deer are feeding on other things, it's going to be okay. You may have the odd situation. You mentioned the hooves. That could be founder, and there's a, it's rumin acidosis. An overload of grain can change the chemical, the chemistry of the rumen, and as a side effect, it can affect their hoof growth. And we won't go off into all the mechanics of that, but it's really not going to hurt the deer. Now, if you pin a deer up and feed it nothing but corn, that's where you run into issues. But these deer are foraging on other things, so you may have the occasional oddity. That's an individual deer issue. So really, really no recommendations other than, don't do it.
Yeah, that was my closing. The recommendation is, don't feed the deer.
Yeah, absolutely. No doubt.
So to dovetail on Ryan's question, if I'm hearing you correctly, it sounds like there's plenty of food source that we don't need to be feeding them.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
So we want to get that word out.
Let or make them make a living, okay? Now, they're going to eat your stuff up. You're going to have a browse line out through there, but, you know.
I guess if we keep planting impatience, they'll have plenty to eat, right?
And, you know, I'm sure everybody has gone online, everybody's gone online and looked at, you know, the types of ornamentals that are less preferred by deer. That lasts a little while. So, you know, you go through these cycles with repellents, and some people try to do fencing and so forth, and plant the different species of ornamentals, but basically, it all kind of comes back around at some point in time as that population continues to increase.
And want to just clarify, DNR only allows one means of mitigating deer population, correct?
Recently, and this could change, and this is brand new, there are a couple of things that you could look at. We, you know, fertility control in deer, there's been research done, and what we're talking about is immun contraception. My entire career, there's been research on one thing or another. Finally, recently, there is a compound called Ghanakon, and it's a product of USDA Wildlife Services. They did all the research. They did all the trials and stuff for EPA. It is above board. It has been registered nationally for, you know, contraceptives in deer. It's used in horses and some other things. We would enter, it hasn't been registered in South Carolina. The label is very specific. It would be used by or under the authority of USDA. There would be some other permits that would be required. We would entertain issuing a permit for that, but you're looking at an extraordinary amount of money. You're probably, and this is a wild guess, probably a thousand dollars an animal. Yeah, the problem with it is, you've got to catch the deer, okay? And that's going to, you know, you're going to have to dart the animal, because you've got to mark it unfit for human consumption, because you're putting chemicals in it, at least for some period of time, but you've still got to market. Plus, you want to know who you've done and who you haven't done, okay? It is directed at females. So the catching of the deer is what jacks up the price. Now, that said, an interesting approach would be, and I'm not recommending it, I'm saying, an interesting approach would be to do as much of that as you can, as you can stand financially, then sharpshoot the unmarked animals. Because this product is supposed to have multi-year efficacy, but it's only about seventy or seventy-five percent effective in year one, and that simply goes down. So you have to boost these animals. You have to, you know. So again, we would entertain if somebody wanted to go that route, but you're going to pay dearly for it, and it may or may not work, okay? Most recently, our board, we've tweaked our guidelines a little bit, in that historically, we have said in our guidelines that we will not entertain or issue permits to trap and relocate deer. Our board's kind of gotten interested in that, and we have changed those guidelines, but you got to pay for it. Again, you got to catch the deer, so you're looking at a thousand, twelve hundred dollars an animal. If you wanted to do that, we would tell you what, and that's all on you. We would tell you to have whoever's catching these deer where to take them.
What would be the cost comparison to the sharpshooting, if it's a thousand dollars a deer to catch them, what's sharpshooting?
And, you know, I haven't really gotten down to the brass tacks with the handful of contractors that do this type of work. I do know most of them. It's the same folks for twenty-something years. We do require, as part of sharpshooting, that you got to pay for the deer to be processed, and it has to be donated to charity, okay? And I can tell you that, I'd have to go look in my file, but we're talking about way over a million meals have come from this program over time, okay? So there's some, even for the folks that don't like the thought of it, there is good there somewhere. About two hundred dollars is my understanding, and that includes the cost of, that's turnkey.
That's everything.
That's a sharpshooter and the process.
That, yeah. And normally, these sharpshooters facilitate the processing. They will work with a local processor and set up, because a lot of this is done after the first of the year, when the deer season is over. So you've got to find somebody that'll open their doors for you. And, you know, let me spend a minute just to describe how these sharpshooting efforts normally are. It's, like I said, it's normally one person that has come, looked over the area, met with who he needs to meet with. It's typically done on common property and by permission from private residents. And that can be very important, to get into certain areas. There's pre-baiting done. Again, normally, it's late in the year or after the first of the year, when it's the peak of winter, the foliage is less on the vegetation. Deer are more susceptible to bait at that time. Again, this is to put them in a safe fire zone. Let's say if you have, and this is, let's just make a hypothetical community that needs to remove in year one, one hundred deer. Normally, you're looking at three or four nights. This is not a deer eradication program. It's a management program. You couldn't kill all the deer if you struck a notion to do it. You just can't do it. And there's no need to do that. You know, they're going to, and what you'll find is that the deer become a lot more like we think deer are, once you kind of get them in a reasonable level. In other words, they see you and they go.
So they become wild again?
They become wild again, exactly. Plus, you're not dealing with as many. And I can tell you, with, you know, dealing with these other communities, this thing works as a very high level of satisfaction, but you got to get over the hump. And normally, the first year or two, in a place that's got deer like it looks like y'all have, it's going to be a job. But again, it's not like people are out there every day or all night for weeks on end. It's one person.
And I assume suppressors are used?
Yeah, that's a requirement, sound suppressed. It's completely humane. If you look at AVMA guidelines, you know, headshots, that's considered humane euthanasia. You know, the deer is basically dead before it hits the ground. It's, you know, over ninety-nine point nine percent. So you aren't dealing with injured deer or missed deer. It's, you know, it's, they get it done.
Do you have a rough guess of the number of deer that would need to be culled? Just based on this preliminary? I know it's not scientific. I'm just, I don't know if we're talking a hundred or five hundred or five thousand.
No, I would probably, and a lot of this, you know, counting deer, counting any wildlife is hard. You know, there's a way to do it, but even if we were off by half, you still got a lot of deer. And I would look at starting out with a hundred, and they're going to let you know what's going on. And I'll give you an example. There was a startup, a smaller community this past cycle, that needed to remove thirty deer one night. They've got to be there in those numbers for somebody to be able to do that. That's the point. Seapines, the first two years, of course, Seapines is over five thousand acres. They removed five hundred animals. Since then, they haven't removed a total of five hundred animals. It's more of a prophylactic annual type, thirty or forty animals in hotspots. And they've got a, they've got a full-time biologist that works down there. So they've got a real good handle, and they've been doing it, you know, they've been messing with their deer situation since the mid nineteen nineties.
Looking at our history in the file, you said it started in two thousand and twelve. I know we did a study sometime around fifteen or sixteen. It was maybe a hundred, hundred-and-fifty deer. I mean, what are we looking at in a trajectory if we don't do something? Is it going to level off at a certain point on its own, or is this?
Yeah, you know, that's difficult to answer. I think there will be some slowing, if nothing else, and don't hold me to it, but I think the survey we did in two thousand and fifteen or two thousand and sixteen was, I want to say, three hundred and something. When you extrapolate it to the entire property, this most recent one we did was more like seven hundred, when, but you know, that's been six, seven years. And that would not be out of the ordinary for a deer population. You know, these deer populations can grow nearly exponentially over time.
So it could double again in another seven years? Is that what you're saying?
Possible.
Okay.
But I think, I think what we talked about in terms of, you're not going to have a bunch of deer dying, but you're going to lose productivity. You're going to lose some fawn production and survival. And that's Mother Nature saying, wait, you know, we, you know, that type of thing.
Follow-up to Tom, if I may. A popular comment that I have seen is that we've taken over all the wooded areas around the surrounding Tegu K. We've built a lot of structure and housing around, and that's driving the deer to us. Can you comment about that?
Yeah, no, that's not a deer's MO. You know, our deer in South Carolina don't really migrate. They don't, they don't process things in a greener pastures way, from a reasoning standpoint. A deer has a home range. And occasionally, you will have individuals disperse or leave that home range, but typically, you know, you've got a home range. This deer is familiar with. That's what it knows. That's where it stays. Now, clearly, if you come in and concret, they've got to go somewhere, but it's, you know, they're not going miles and miles away. You know, they're kind of homeboys.
So the growth that we're seeing isn't from development. It's from just production?
Yeah, you've got deer. They've always been here.
They're just mating.
They're doing what deer do, in the face of no predation or no... They're, they're, they're doing what deer do, in the face of, of no predation or no annual mortality.
Right. So, so that's happened because we stopped hunting them, it sounds like?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and you know, a lot of the, and I don't know the timing on Tegu K, but you know, our deer population, if you go back fifty years, this part of the state did not have a lot of deer. There was a few. But, but again, over time, you start getting a few more and a few more, and they kinda hit a critical mass where you hit that exponential population growth. And we saw that at very, at different time intervals across the state.
And could you speak to, and I know you're more focused on the large animal side of things, but in comparison to the coyote or wolf population? With that growth of the deer population, has there been?
Absolutely, and, and the wolf thing, we don't have, we don't have wolves. We do have coyotes, of course, coyotes are a western species. Naturally, they occurred west of the Mississippi, and for whatever reason, there were some changes that went along with uh, European or, or, or our westward expansion that changed habitats and allowed the coyotes to get on the east side of the Mississippi. They, uh, went up into the upper Midwest, it seems, based on, on genetics, and then they filtered down into the southeast. We've had coyotes, um, our, our first occurrences were in the late nineteen seventies. Of course, it was a novelty at that point. So, it goes back a good number of years, but it seems like, to your point, around the turn of the century, coyotes, just like we saw in our deer population, just like we've seen in our turkey population, they were enough of them out there in enough areas to where they hit that exponential growth. And, and, you know, annually, to document our hunting deer harvest, we do a postseason survey of hunters. And in the late nineties, we were starting to hear a lot more chirping from hunters and just people in general about coyotes. Cause they were numerous enough for, you know, people were beginning to see them, and deer hunters were shooting them, they're not protected. So, we started asking a question on our deer hunter survey. By the way, did you harvest and did you shoot any coyotes while you were deer hunting? So, we've been able to document that growth in the coyote population, it was really something else to see. From the late nineties through about twenty fourteen or twenty fifteen, and just like you would expect, it, it hit the ceiling, Mother Nature said, okay, that's it. And really, we've seen, i- if, if this technique has any validity, you know, asking deer hunters the same question year after year after year about shooting coyotes incidental to deer hunting. If it has any validity, well, they, they've started down. We, we did see a fairly significant decline in our deer population. And I know y'all are probably saying, geez, this guy's crazy, but I'm talking about big picture, we're not talking about Tegu K. Starting, our deer population maxed out around the turn of the century. And I think there were three things that bent that population trajectory over. We were, we were talking about a million deer in the state at that time. Now, we're talking about seven hundred thousand, that's thirty percent fewer animals. That, that's, that's pretty significant. I think that was brought about by habitat change, and I won't go off into that, but our natural, our, our rural habitats do change. Okay? Uh, we had really, as an agency, out of necessity, turned up the volume, so to speak, on the har- the, uh, allowance for the harvest of antlerless deer, doe deer, to try to stop that population growth. So, there was a couple of decades of hunters getting much more friendly with this notion that it's okay to shoot a doe deer. Okay? The third thing is the complete colonization of the state by coyotes. And we did some really groundbreaking, at least in the southeast, work looking at coyote predation on deer fawns at the Savannah River Site, that was our study area. And not to go off into that, they eat, they can be a major player in fawn, uh, recruitment. Okay? To the tune of about fifty percent of your mortalities can be attributed to coyotes. So, those things kinda came together after the turn of the century, and it bent that population trajectory over, which was a good thing. We didn't need the deer we had in the late nineties. And our, our hunters now understand that you can't have a lot of deer and have quality deer at the same, those are mutually exclusive phenomenon, so to speak. So, um, you know, I think we're in a better place statewide generally from a a rural deer management standpoint. But again, you got, you've got these issues like you're, y'all are struggling with here.
So, Dr. Ruth, could you walk us through the next steps as we, as we navigate this process? As to what we can expect to come next?
Yeah, well, again, I would encourage you to do whatever you can to, and I can probably put you in touch with, um, there's a, there's a community up in, um, Oconee County, Kiwi Key, and they've been through this process the last few years. They did a really good job of reaching out to their public. So, if, if, Scott, if you'll get with me, or send me an email, I'll get you the contact. Um, and, and let you talk with the gentleman that was kinda spearheading their effort. I think he's a retired engineer, and I'd never seen anything like somebody dedicating himself for this community to, to do all this work. So, again, y'all are gonna need to be able to make this decision confidently. That's the first thing, so, so get, get your information. Involve the public as, as much as you think is necessary. I think the next step is, uh, do a couple more surveys in the late summer, which will bolster your decision-making. I wouldn't run off right away and make a decision, cause you're gonna be criticized for it. Get some more information. Yeah, get some more information, look at your next couple of surveys. Then at that point, it will be time to make a decision whether to move ahead with, with, with a, a sharpshooting program, or just live with the deer.
Well, with the surveys that come up, would it be a good idea for us to differentiate bucks, does?
Absolutely, and that was, that was not possible in the late winter survey, because the bucks had dropped their antlers. Last year's fawns were about the size of, of any other deer, so you just, but you will, you will be able to look at antlered to antlerless ratio, and then doe to fawn ratio as well.
Another thing that, that we've had a problem with, um, you know, when I first moved over to Lake Ridge, we had a problem with coyotes. Uh, we had coyotes attacking small children, we had coyotes attacking large adults running. Could we possibly incorporate, while you guys are here, could we incorporate, kinda get a two-for-one deal? Uh, and do the coyotes and the deer study as well?
A couple of comments on that. And, and, you know, unless the coyote situation is really bad, I wouldn't touch them. Because they're gonna help you with your deer situation.
The situation that I'm concerned with is them helping themselves to a two-year-old child. And I have seen them run at a two-year-old child and actually have to carry one in the house.
Yeah, well, i- if it, if it is such that you think you need to act, there are scores of trappers out there, we've got a list, we don't, we don't have to do anything. Y'all get with a trapper, if it's an off time of year as far as trapping, we can issue a permit, and you can let them trap coyotes until the cows come home. Okay? A lot, a lot different than what we require with the deer situation.
I would just be interested to see the, the amount of coyotes that we have.
Well, there's not really, you know, coyotes are gonna be much more problematic to try to sense.
Yeah, they're very elusive.
Because you're looking at, e- even if you've got a fair number, it's still not many. Because coyotes, you know, a deer's home range out in the country, it may be five or six hundred acres. And there can be multiple deer within that same six, you know, we, we have typical rural deer habitat that may have thirty or forty deer per square mile, which is six hundred and forty acres. In a, in a, in a situation like this, their home ranges typically aren't as large. Coyotes have tremendous home ranges. I mean, you may only have eight or ten coyotes that are using the sixteen hundred acres of coy- of Tegu K, because they don't, they aren't gonna tolerate each other. Coyotes are, are more like that. Okay? So...
Interesting.
You know, you're not gonna be dealing with, you know, you may pick up, and the thing about coyotes is they, they move an awful lot. They can move hundreds of miles. And what we found in our study looking at predation by coyotes on deer fawns is, and coyotes have two MOs, you've got resident coyotes. It's normally a, a mating pair that have set up their area, and they're kind of particular about other coyotes coming in. You got, so those are the, the, the local coyotes, and then you've got these transients, which are oftentimes juveniles. And if you remove the residents, well, then this transient says, hey, I, I've found a place at this point. So, there's a lot of backfill when you start trapping coyotes, and it can almost be a never-ending type of deal. That's really what we found when we were working on our Savannah Riverside project, that, that, gosh, you just got to stay on them, so... Again, to your point, if y'all wanna trap coyotes, knock yourself out. There's not a thing in the world we're gonna have to do, other than to guide you to the appropriate per- free permits, it's free, there's no charge.
Charles?
There's folks out there that can catch them like crazy.
Yep. I heard, uh, if I heard correctly, I heard what sounded like three options with managing the deer population. I heard, um, sterilization, relocation is being considered, but not an option at this point, right?
No, it is.
Oh, it is, okay. And, uh, and sharpshooters, are there other options that you see others using?
Live with them. Live with the deer.
Really? Have you seen any other public hunting programs?
You know, that's always, uh, something to consider. If you, if you have the, the green spaces that would be, you know, be reasonable to allow hunters in, typically in a setting like this, it would be archery hunting. Of course, the efficiency of that goes way down, but there's a lot of this urban suburban archery, um, efforts, pardon me, in the northeast and the upper Midwest, they do a lot of that. In, in these, these green spaces, these parks, and, and so on and so forth. It, again, our program is still so small here that, um, they haven't really considered it. Most of the times, when you get in a situation like this with the, the amount of homes, it just, people just don't want, want hunting. But it, it certainly could work. Sun City down in, in, uh, in the Hilton Head area, they have a group of archers that have been, you know, bowhunting there on that property for, gosh, ten or more years, and I don't, I don't hear a lot from Sun City. I mean, apparently, they're removing enough deer to where it's, I don't really know the lay of the land, I think they've got a, on one side of that property, a lot of undeveloped area where these bowhunters are out of sight, out of mind, and they're shooting the deer and, and so forth.
I'm concerned about it from a public safety perspective, allowing something like that, but from an economic perspective, I thought I should ask that.
It, it would, it would clearly, in my mind, be something to try, if you've got enough green spaces, the archery thing is gonna be completely safe. Firearms, uh, just a, a, a general hunting approach with firearms, probably not, not a good idea in a setting like this.
I just gotta, I just gotta think that PR-wise, I mean, if you allowed archery hunting as dense as Tegu K is, you can wind up with injured deer in other people's backyards.
Right, it's not as productive, from what I understand, on the humane kill that you're talking about. And, uh, and we don't want that. If we're, if we're gonna move forward with a program, we want something that's humane.
And I, and I really think you're probably gonna have difficulty with the lay of the land and the amount of spaces that you would have getting enough deer. Yeah, I really do.
Probably the last question for me, are there any deer illnesses or anything that they carry with them that's transmittable to people or other pets?
No, that, you know, probably one of the biggest things, you know, is this concern with tick-borne diseases. And of course, that's the tick, it's not the deer. Deer kinda get a bad rap. Deer have ticks, tick has a disease, but the life cycle of the type of ticks, for example, that have Lyme disease is very complex, like a lot of parasites. It involves multiple hosts and so forth. So, um, some folks are gonna be concerned about the tick situation. From a consumption of deer standpoint, toxoplasmosis is a, is a kinda like a malaria-type protozoan disease. That's from, that's from, uh, consuming fresh, undercooked venison. But it's not just about deer. It's lots and lots of different types of meat, cattle. It's a globally distributed parasite that you can pick up by eating fresh, undercooked meat. I had toxo, I knew better than to do what I did, and I ate some, some fresh, undercooked deer about twenty years ago. It wasn't fun. So, but, but, but you know, you don't hear about that. It's, it's a, I think toxo is a reportable, but it's not, you know, if I get it, it's my problem, it's not your problem. But you gotta be a knothed to get it, you know?
Right.
Dress your deer, freeze the meat, which knocks it out. And if you're gonna eat it fresh, you really need to cook it, but that's the recipe for all meat. You, you know? But other than that, no.
No CWD or anything like that?
No, CWD is a very significant, uh, neurological disorder of deer that's big. I mean, it's not a good situation in, in the United States at this point. We haven't diagnosed it in South Carolina, they diagnosed it in North Carolina since the first of the year, but it's all about deer. Okay? At least at this point.
They're not gonna share it with our pets?
There's no link to human health issues with CWD at this point. If you've heard of CJD or Creutzfeldt-Jakoff disease in humans, typically, and not to get off into this, but those types of diseases are typically species-specific. In other words, we get CJD, these are prion diseases. Deer get CWD. Sheep get what's called scrapie. Uh, but it typically doesn't go from, from this species to another species, so... But it's, it's not a good situation in deer, it's, it's deadly to deer, if they get it, they're dead at some point.
I just, one follow-up, I'm sorry. Uh, about, earlier, you were talking about the safety with deer, social aspects and stuff like that. Some, some people have asked me concerns about the, about bucks or, or, or mothers around babies, you know, chasing kids, hurting kids, is that even?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, sure. And you know, a, a doe deer with a young fawn, potentially particularly on dogs. And this is another thing about the feeding. These bucks, you know, that, you know, in, you know, in the, in the October and November, if these deer are used to coming up close to people, that's a, that's a train wreck waiting to happen right there. Uh, even, even with the does.
Cause the buck sees us as a threat?
Yeah, in the breeding season, during, during the rut, and you know, these bucks get all kinda acting up, and, uh, you don't ever know when one's gonna do something. You don't hear, we, we know we have these hand, sometimes people will hand raise a deer. And they will learn if it's a buck, it may take three or four years, but it's gonna get them at some point, it's probably gonna be in October or November. I mean, you gotta feed them with a slingshot, so to speak, if, if you've got a captive buck during the breeding season. It may be the nicest animal in the world at other times, but one day, you're gonna wake up down on the ground and this deer is over top of you. You know, these, these things are all kinda humorous. But they can happen. They do happen. And I'll tell you one thing, and I, I'm reluctant to say it. I think, and I've always thought, and the folks at Seapines were right on this, that, that there's a certain amount of liability, in my opinion, and I think it goes without saying, for folks like you in this situation. Because y'all been talking about a deer problem since two thousand twelve. And I'm not encouraging, again, I'm not here to tell you what, y'all what to do, cause I'm gonna drive back to Columbia, and I'm gonna go to work tomorrow, and I'm not gonna be thinking about Tegu K. But I want you to, I want you to think about that when an unfortunate situation like the kid gets knocked off the bike by the deer and breaks his head open. And somebody's gonna be standing right here one day and say, y'all been talking about this for ten years, you hadn't done anything about it, I'm gonna see you in court.
To, to summarize, I mean, as, as, as a council and as decision-makers, we need to, if we choose to, to gauge the residents' feelings about a mitigation program, even though I think we all figure they're probably fifty percent here and fifty percent there, we need to do at least a couple more deer studies after the bucks have grown their antlers sometime this summer, late summer, but before hunting season. Correct?
Yeah, probably late August, early September.
And honestly, at that point, then, we need to make a decision as to what we think is in the best interest of the city and its, and its residents. I mean, that's pretty much it, right?
I think so.
You agree?
I agree. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
You fellows have anything else? I think I'm good.
Once again, Dr. Ruth, we appreciate you coming through and, uh, educating us. Um, I feel a lot better on some of the, the issues that, that I had with it. Um, and I appreciate all the information.
Okay.
So, is, do we get any, everybody's good, nobody's got any more questions? Okay.
Motion to adjourn. Could I make a motion to adjourn?
Uh, make a motion to adjourn?
I have, I have a motion.
I'll second it then.
I already have a motion. All right. I've got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Dr. Ruth, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. I appreciate your time, and I appreciate everybody getting, learning with us this evening. Thank you very much.